Like there's, there's eighteen.
I came home and the gate was open and I stole boxes. I told him, I was like, there's boxes back there.
She knows.
He went back there, not like back in there, but close to the gate where you can see it. He goes, those are bees.
You bought those things for?
And they're already over in our area.
Well, the bus can't even come up the road or pick up a kid.
Right.
I'll call this meeting doors at six fifteen. We'll open with glad delight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of this same nation, under our banner, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Shane Gilf, for something of work, pray.
Dear God, we come to you tonight and Lord, we just pray that, uh, Lord, you would continue to, uh, bless, to keep your hand over, uh, hold our town. Uh, Lord, we pray for over the proceedings of tonight, for everything that is discussed. Uh, Lord, we want it to be in order, uh, with your will. And, Lord, we pray that, God, you would give us wisdom and clarity tonight, uh, to be able to do just that. Lord, your will be done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I apologize for that, but we're supposed to start pretty much on time, so. All right, welcome everyone. Uh, we'll have a roll call. Vice Mayor Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Bates.
Here.
Councilman Pierce.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
All present. All ready. Uh, we'll move along. Public comments on agenda items only. Anyone here to public to comment on agenda items only. Hearing none. Consideration of minutes before you, March tenth, two thousand twenty-five. You have the council minutes, uh, meeting minutes in front of you. I've read them a few times. I think everything is fairly well in order. Is there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Or if y'all had time to read them. I know sometimes we've got some problems with emails. Some emails get bounced back. Mine wouldn't open, so I think it was. Yeah, that's what, uh, I think Danny's had that problem also. Mine wasn't open on, on my phone and would slowly open on my computer. Is it where it's so large? I don't know.
It's the time of the phone. It's a dial phone. Cell phones are a lot out there.
Okay. Well, I mean, we'll try to change anything on our end. I'm not that guy to ask on technology, but we will try. Michael will try to do whatever he can do to, to please everyone. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. They'll be approved as written. We'll move along to item number seven. Chief Hunt and the police report. Any other questions for Chief Hunt? Hearing none. We'll move along to police report. Chief, a favor.
I don't really have any time. I've been busy explaining from last day. I don't have any questions.
Hearing no questions. Move along to financial statements.
I don't have anything above and beyond those statements unless you guys have any questions.
Questions for Michael? Uh, hearing none. We'll move along into new business. Uh, I will ask that we had a emergency come up in the last couple of days. Uh, I'm gonna let Drew, Gentry wastewater supervisor, talk to us about a pump situation that we had just pop up a couple of days ago.
So around the third pipe, that's a seventy-five horsepower commercial pumps. Been doing this nineteen ninety-three. Been rebuilt a couple of times. The ones completely went out. Can't get parts for it anymore. It's too old. So I got a quote on replacing the same pump that come out of the hull. Well, it's forty-five thousand dollars. Comes with a year-end. I'm gonna shop around and spend the best that I can. Well, I have found an eighty horsepower pump with a five-year warranty and replacing the metal piping that's inside the pump station itself for forty-four thousand four hundred and three dollars. So I can get one cheaper, bigger, better, replace the piping and a five-year warranty versus spending forty-five with a one-year warranty. But I need y'all to be gracious to go ahead and order.
Now, this is budgeted money.
Yeah, I have money in the budget to buy it right now.
Our purchasing policy allows us to make emergency purchases. It just so happened it falls right before a council meeting, so that's why we brought it to you guys. Uh, I don't think that we have to have formal approval. Do you know that, Mr. Winkler, as far as emergency purchases, but, you know, it just so happened it, it worked out this way. So we just wanted to know. Just wanted to let you guys know that, you know, that's what we were doing. We would go through the normal bid process if this didn't happen. If this other pump goes down, we're in trouble.
It's three hundred dollars a day. So you've got an eighty horsepower pump, seventy-five, right? And so, and so cost of the eighty. Now, the total cost without the piping, you're gonna have to have the piping because it's a rear pump. Without the piping, it's, uh, the pump itself is thirty-four thousand nine hundred and eight with the piping that you're gonna have to have. So all the piping in the station will be new. It's total price of forty-four thousand four hundred and three dollars and fifty-seven cents. That's installed.
Lead time on this?
Right now, if we ordered it right now, it's eight weeks.
So I mean, that's.
And how much we spent in the, a day?
If, if the other one goes out, it's three hundred dollars a day.
Like mostly by the eighty horse with five-year warranty.
I got a question.
Yes.
That five horsepower difference, it gonna affect any plumbing lines or anything other than the piping that you're gonna replace?
Yes.
It's not gonna have any adverse effects by increasing horsepower?
And, and the reason it has to have a lot of head pressure, because it's coming by all them hills behind McDonald's. The only pump station that is on it is this pump station that, uh.
Preston Road.
Yep, Preston Road. That's the only thing pumps against you, because their, their size is big enough to go with.
Cedar Stone. Cedar Stone.
Yes, Cedar Stone. That's right.
I just wanna make sure we don't have any adverse effect of, uh, increasing what's in there.
Yeah, we, we've talked to Wascon, who does the majority of our work. You know, we ask them first and, you know, they throw out recommendations, so. Is there a second on Councilwoman Williams' motion? Uh, any more questions? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
Uh, Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Drew, the reason we done that first, Drew's got two ballgames to go through. He better get to his fucking ballgames. All right, we'll move along to, uh, the next item, or actually the first item. Ordinance number two zero two five zero four one four zero four. This is a zoning amendment for the town of Goresville. And what this is, uh, this is back to the Baker property. Uh, most of you guys have dealt with that before. And what they're asking is to be moved from an I, I one. They retained forty acres of the original hundred and twenty to shop it for industrial use. They rezoned the other eighty acres back a couple of years ago to an M one zone. So what they're asking is to rezone that from an I one to a C two, which is a commercial. And then, once it's rezoned commercial, they're looking to get the rest of it in an M one zoning. The way the planning commission, I know this is confusing. It's still confusing with me and I've been here five years. The way the M one set up, that the property had to be R two or C two, which is commercial and residential, high density, before it could be con- considered to rezone to M one, which is mixed residential commercial. Everybody's following. So if we, this will be the first reading on this. There'll be another, there'll be a public hearing and a second reading next month. And then, once that's adopted, if it's, is adopted, we will rezone that. They will ask to be rezoned to an M one, which is the rest of their eighty acres is M one. So they just want to make all the hundred and twenty acres M one. Uh.
What, and what is that specific?
M one can be anything from single-family homes to commercial businesses. No industrial, but anything residential or commercial. But under an M one, we have stricter regulations that we go by under an M one. Everything that's been built from a, a house to an apartment or to a beauty shop, it has to come back before the planning commission, under the BZA, Board of Zoning and Appeals, and we say yes or no. That's why when we created that, and it took a long time to create that, the town wanted their fingerprint or their say of what was going in these districts. So that ultimately, why we did it that way, everybody looks at us like we're crazy, but we established it that way and that's, you know, that's the way it's worked so far. So I mean, each individual thing has to be approved by Board of Zoning and Appeals. And that involves, uh, you know, going, the planning commission is the Board of Zoning and Appeals, so. Uh, I think that's all I've got on that. I did a pretty decent job explaining that. I know I've lost most of you, but believe me, we get lost too. But I would entertain a motion to adopt this zoning ordinance on the first reading.
I got a question.
Yes.
Why did we, why did they not zone that originally?
The reason they didn't do it originally, because the state economic development team were pressuring them to retain some of that for industrial. And they did for two years. Well, the state, if they don't have any money involved, they want you to retain all the land possible for industrial use. So, uh, Mr. Dixon that owns it is a residential guy. He wants to stick to residential and go with it from there. That's the reason they didn't. It would've been easier on him if he would've just rezoned all of it.
Godfather asked him why, he didn't do it.
It would've been a whole lot easier.
And there was another purchaser in play, correct? That went to industrial first.
The county.
The county.
The county owned it and went to industrial first, yes. It may have went from agriculture. I can't remember what that was on several years ago.
Was that some kind of pelletizing plant or something they glued or they put in there that?
Yeah.
And it got shut down?
Uh, there was three.
There was a couple.
Three different plans that were going in that could've.
That's why I don't put a whole lot of faith in concepts, because I've been burning on concepts since the day I was sitting in this office, so. Uh, concepts are just a drawing. I don't put any value on it whatsoever. Need a motion for that? Get the board some moves?
To rezone it from, I'll make the motion and here's why. If I'm gonna fight somebody getting in and out of the parking spot, I'm gonna fight a car rather than a semi. My reasoning for taking that out of industrial, I would rather save a home than me have to fight. So I'm gonna say I'll make the motion and that's all.
Is there a second?
My second.
All righty. And I will say, I'll add, usually I'd say it and I didn't this time, it's been unanimous, recommended by the planning commission to rezone this. Like I say, most of it for the reason that, that Mr. Smith stated. Uh, motion and second. Any further discussion?
Is the Baker Gillis property M one?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's what I think.
Yes, sir. All right, uh, we'll do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll have a second reading in public hearing next month on that. Uh, next agenda item is ordinance two zero two five zero four one four zero two. Zoning amendment. It's for the Cedar Stone community. Uh, if you drive up Alice Preston, Cross Hill, up in that area, they have a kind of an island there in the middle that's encompassed by the road. They originally rezoned that from R one to R two. Now they're looking to go back from an R two to an R one, which R two is apartments, things of that nature. R one is just single-family homes. So they are asking to revert back to that, which I think as a city, we're, you know, I think we would like that a lot more. So they wanted to come back and honor what they said, hey, you know, we're not going to do apartments here. We're gonna do single-family homes. So they are asking to, to move that back down from an R two to an R one. And like I said, I think it, it better suits the needs of the town.
That was a lot next to them, thank you.
No, sir, that was right above those lots. If you drive all the way around, everything you circled, it's with that in the middle. It's two point five eight acres. I think it was initially eight or nine lots. They broke it down to two, to two lots. They were gonna be able to one set of apartments of each side.
Okay.
And they scratched that idea now, so. I will need a motion on that. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll roll call.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank y'all on that. Thanks for staying with me. Next on the agenda is amendment to Town of Goresville major thoroughfare plan. I think back in February, there's a, there's a picture of it back in your packet and everything, uh, all zoning assignments are affected by the road classification that they join. The planning commission studied the road plan and recommended to the council for passage and it was approved. I think it was back in January, February. We knew upon passage there would be a need, uh, for adjustments in the future. The planning commission at our last meeting last week is requesting that we update two roads, Bentley Harris Way and Rogers Road, just those two roads. And what they're wanting to make those or classify those as a major collector street. Now, these are all just city streets. No county, no state, no federal interstate. This is just our two roads. And one of the reasons they wanted to do that is because there's industry on, on both of those roads. So they would be classified as a major, uh, collector street. Like I say, it's just kinda, we had an outdated plan from years ago in nineteen eighty-eight. It didn't really, we didn't have any growth, so nobody ever, including myself, never did update it. We got to looking at it, the planning commission, Tommy Lee bringing him on board, recommended that we update it, and this is what we've come up with. Of course, y'all have this plan, y'all have adopted this whole plan already. We just want to move those to major collectors instead of, uh, are they arterials? Is that correct, Michael?
Yeah.
And what that affects is in your planning is setbacks and things like that, so.
Currently, they're local. Correct.
Local? Is that what it is?
Mm-hmm, at least so.
Do we have any major collector roads today?
The interstate and then Main Street right here. It's only two.
Additional funding statewide for the maintenance or anything from that?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I'd say no, not that I'm aware of.
Do we lose any control over what goes in and out of those? Or, once we change that over, does the state then mandate entrances and those kind of things as they would a state?
I think that's for our personal use, basically.
This is just your, your list, basically. I, I don't think it's gonna affect other than you're probably making it more accurate at least, because those probably do qualify based on the amount of traffic.
Just wanna make sure we're not losing any.
I wouldn't.
Told what can or cannot happen.
Right. No, this is basically for our purposes. Uh, it clarifies it mainly upfront when somebody comes in and says, what can I do on this street? You know, it puts a label on it because it, in previous times, we said, well, I don't know.
They're not gonna seek to upkeep something that they don't want to.
Yeah, this should just be strictly internal. I would entertain a motion on that.
So, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion?
So I guess, are there any adverse effects to changing these internally? Or anything bad that, you know, is it, the people that are on these roads today, is it gonna affect them?
No, no, no.
It opens up their ability to change the zone into something they wanna use it for, because it's labeled that.
So what, what is the zone there?
The zone is currently, there's I one, I two, there is M one that boards it, and there's C two that boards it.
What is not there that could be there by the end of this?
When you got I two, when you got I one and I two, you got it all.
And you now could have M one.
Yep.
Okay.
If you change it, you can have M one.
Today, we can't have M one?
We have M one on it now.
Well, you should.
Well, that was the first piece of property that was ever labeled M one. Was that property that boarded it?
Before it could be M one, of course, it needs to be labeled as that. To qualify.
And these are the only two that will now become the major collector, other than Main Street?
Unless, you know, the board sees fit to change a double one, which I'm surprised we missed that one when we done the work. You know, those two, Bentley Harris Way. Just because of the nature of how wide they are and the, the type of traffic that comes up and down them, you know, with it being semi trucks, dump trucks, deliveries, things like that.
Does J M Z?
That's kinda where I was. That's tricky.
I don't have my color burnt in here, so I can't say a hundred percent what it is.
They're, they're actually different colors, so this is not a hundred percent accurate. You got a colored copy in handy?
On my computer, but I don't got no way to print it off. That was real country. I ain't got no, sorry.
We can get you a color copy that shows that. Like I say, I didn't know it was gonna be that big of a deal. It's not, like I say, but I can get a color copy of that since you guys. I would think so, yes. I would think so. It may not be, but I ain't got the copy here in front of me.
It's not major right now.
Is it just?
It's just Main Street and the interstate.
And Tommy Lee?
Makes me wonder if we should look at other roads then, if we're gonna do these two.
We were asked this body to look at those roads when you passed it, you know, to help us.
Can we just table this and, and till y'all get a, a clear picture of all these and bring it back?
Sure. Yeah, that's not a problem. We'll get that email first thing in the morning.
Because you got J M Z. What's the next one between Bentley Harris and J M Z? What is that?
That's Baker Lane. Baker Lane. But it's not big enough to qualify.
Tablely, it's not gonna change the fact that these two need to be made. Those.
You got a arrow Baker Lane, which it should be your road.
It should be, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'll, I'll bring that back. To change those two doesn't prevent you from changing others and you can do that next week.
And we knew this was gonna be a work in progress when we started it, because I think I goofed up the first one. And we left out, like Luther Allen, Catherine Street, and stuff like that, you know. But we'll get that, I mean, we can get that out to you guys first thing in the morning.
Robert Rule's order then says that I need to retract my motion, correct?
Did your motion get a second?
It did.
Yeah.
It did not?
Yeah, I said.
It did.
They would have to rescind a second. You would have to rescind your motion.
I rescind my second motion.
I rescind my motion and make a motion that we table this to the next meeting. Look at it, include everything that needs to be.
We will get that to you guys first thing in the morning.
They need to vote.
I'm sorry.
They need to vote on the table.
Is there a second on that? Did somebody second that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote on that. Uh.
Uh, Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson. Councilman Smith.
Yes.
You're still trying to figure out what you just did.
All righty, the next one, we will move along to resolution two zero two five zero four one four eight X. Resolution to annex the property and adopt a plan of services. I will turn this over to Mr. Winkler. You'll give a brief explanation.
We have before you this resolution that would, uh, annex the property that we've, we've been discussing and what's the subject of the hearing earlier. Um, one point we wanna make, or I wanna make, is that you are truly annexing forty-eight point three eight acres of the sixty point six eight that's in the property description. Twelve point three of those acres in this, uh, property are already part of the town. So what you're actually annexing is forty-eight point three eight. There is not a new survey, so we have to use the property description by the deed, and that's why it's a little higher than what's listed, than what you're actually annexing, because part of it is already within the city limits. Um, this resolution is the final step in the process. Um, if it passes, the property is annexed. Just wanna point out a, a couple of things. There are certain timeframes when you annex this and get notice to, to your property owners and you follow your recommendation back from the planning commission. Um, and you have met all those timeframes. You posted your signs, you sent the letters, you put the publication in a local paper. Uh, this final resolution just has to be passed after the public hearings, which you, you just had. You could've had those a week ago and had it on the agenda for tonight, but you chose to put it, put it all together and that was, that was your decision, um, to do that. Uh, all that you're doing with this, all that it does, it just brings it within the, uh, city limits of the town of Goresville. You're in no way approving a plan as to what's going there. You're in no way approving streets, anything of that nature. What you are doing is you're actually allowing the town to have, for lack of a better term, some say in what does go there. Though it's now subject, if it, if it passes, it would be subject to your zoning ordinance, not the county's. It would be subject to your planning commission, not the county's. It would be subject to your subdivision regulations, not anybody else's. So that, that is truly what it is. Um, the burden, of course, is you're gonna have more property for your police to protect. You're gonna have more property for your fire department to protect. That's part of the plan of services. But you presumably would also encompass the tax dollars that would come with that. But you, you don't have any, uh, you are not at all approving what's gonna go there. After this passes, then, uh, they would come forward probably at some point with what you're gonna zone this property. And once it's zoning, then the neighbors and the citizens, they know and would have a say as to what's gonna go in there. They would be able to speak to this council and potentially the planning commission as to what, uh, the plan is. You, the planning commission would get placed, presumably, if it's a subdivision. That's a very rigorous process. You, the planning commission would get plaits, presumably, if it's a subdivision, that's a very rigorous process to, to go through. But you have complied with all your, all your timeframes, and this resolution i- is the final step in the process. But it's, it's subject to the council's approval. If it requires more study, it does. If it doesn't, everything has been followed. And, and again, just to be clear, there is absolutely no approval as to what is or is not gonna go in there other than the fact that you, the town of Corlins would have some control over forty eight acres of a plait, but twelve of it is already within the city limits. And you can have the option to, to better protect what goes there, protect the citizens, protect the neighbors. And give them the opportunity to say, because presumably, if they chose, if the owners, this was a homeowner consent. If they chose to go ahead and move forward with a subdivision, that would be outside the town's control. But you're certainly gonna suffer from it, and not get the tax dollars from, from what it is. I think that the property owners and homeowners in that area. They, yes, they didn't give the notice, they didn't have the opportunity to come to the meeting. But maybe this was a little bit over weapon to them, so I think we need to table this and give them one more chance to come to the planning commission, to see the plaits, to see what the plans are. That way they can, they can hear what the planning commission is talking about. Slowen the process, definitely pump brakes, and give them a chance.
We do not have plaits, we do not have, planning commission doesn't have plans. We're not approving any plans whatsoever. So that's why, I mean.
We, we got projections or something, maybe?
We got some on a piece of paper, but to say that.
That's not, that's nothing, and great, and stop or anything. I understand that.
I mean, I, whatever this body wants to do.
Yes, we'll have to advertise again, yes, we'll have to send out notice again. That's, it's gonna cost a little money, but at the same time, we want to keep residents and property owners happy and keeping them in the loop and give them opportunity to say, okay, when is the next planning commission meeting anyway? It's on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Second Wednesday of the month. Second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday.
Three o'clock.
We don't make that certain timeframe. So, I personally think we need to give them a chance to be here, listen to it, ask more questions. And, and then if the developers want to be annexed, we'll still be here. Once that everybody else is brought up to the board, and give them a chance to ask, ask questions, get their answers.
What other residents would you like us to buy? We send out letters to all property owners as we were supposed to.
Well, we, we had a full house here tonight, we only had about ten minutes to discuss this. I don't think that's ten minutes and stuff.
That's perfectly fine. I have not received any phone calls.
Well, I know you have, but, like I said, let's pump brakes.
Okay, that's, that's yours decision.
I think, I think that that's the, the, um, the right thing to do.
I will honor that a hundred percent.
Table this until when?
Second Wednesday of the month. I think maybe with it.
Yeah.
Or you ask, if you want another public hearing, which is, which is more than fine, we just need to, we'll have to publish that. Redo the signs and things of that nature, which is fine, no, no problem. But then you would table that, and you would send another public hearing, is that what? Because if they're not annexed, the planning commission can't require them to come with any kind of plan or a plait, that way. You could invite them to come to a public hearing. You could invite them to be at a council meeting. We can't compel them because they're not, it would be no different than a piece of property over that hard inch.
It's not our property, and I, I, I hope this is not an ally. I respect every citizen, know all them, love them. And, I mean, I, I understand it, and I get where that's coming from, but as a council and as a city. There's really nothing, if we make that decision tonight, these property owners could say, okay, that's fine, the city doesn't want us to be annexed. We will proceed, and they can do so without any say so of this council, of this city at all. And they will make use. I go back to that plan that we were just handed, they will go back and every entrance will come to our roads. They will use those streets, and we will have absolutely no say. And we will not collect one penny of city finances to be able to maintain the effects that it's gonna have on our cities. Right now, our issue is, we're just saying, it can stay. Cows can move on that forty eight acres till Jesus comes. All this council's decision tonight is that we have just increased the city limits borders by forty eight point four three acres that we can control now. Otherwise, we lose. I am not making that decision out of any disrespect to any homeowner, any taxpayer. It would break my heart to see you not have a choice or a say. And if we don't move forward, we potentially are doing more harm to our constituents in the long run than we are good. That's my reasoning, and I may be completely off on that understanding, and if I am, I apologize. But I'm, I'm looking at it from right now, all we're doing is just growing the city. Which is currently a resi, I mean, is an agriculture piece of property that we're including into our city limits. It is agricultural. We're not rezoning it?
Yet.
Yet.
How long do we have to rezone it?
It doesn't provide, just when they, they should make application as to what they want it zoned. And to, to what you're saying, and to what Mr. Danny's saying, what, you do have some control with the twelve point three acres.
Correct.
Because that's, that's here, that's kinda ahead of the property, as I understand it. So you've got a little bit there. You wouldn't, because Mr. Ray had asked, I don't think you necessarily have to start the process over because there's no timeframe. Once you have a public hearing, you just have to adopt the resolution. But you do have a, a bit of control, but no, that's, that's absolutely correct. They're not subject to anything. The forty eight acres is not subject to any town of Corlins will control at this point.
Right, and I'm fine deciding, wait, have another, another public hearing? And maybe that be, with time restraints not an issue, to be able to make that clearly demonstrated to other homeowners, that maybe would give them a little more assurance of what, what we are being asked to do right here. Because nothing can go before the city, planning commission, for those forty eight point four three acres at all.
And they could show up, but there's nothing to force them to do.
The planning commission can't approve anything on those forty eight point four three acres.
They have no jurisdiction.
And nor if we had that annexed. I've been in the planning commission all enough, and Daniel, you have too. They're not gonna give you an opinion on a piece of property until somebody submits something, you know. They might say, yeah, that's a good idea, but they will not give you, I'm gonna vote a yes.
Um, that's not coming from a, I'm not trying to. It, it's not like that at all. I mean, I, I just want to play, make sure we understand what we're doing, but I, I'm fine having another one.
Okay.
Out of respect for those homeowners, if that's what we decide, I just wanna make sure.
It just, if you have another public hearing, I would recommend it just has to be technically maybe not, but it just has, at least be twenty one days out. Because you've gotta give the notices and time to do that, so thirty would be.
I've gotta change the signs also, which is generally pretty quick.
Okay, and can we give them more than fifteen minutes? And let's, let's be able to.
It doesn't have to be any time before this.
No, the only reason it was fifteen minutes because this is the second time that anybody showed up for a public hearing as long as I've been here. Great, that's what we want. It just so happened that it's budget time, we had a public hearing, we had a record council.
You could even set the public hearing and not vote on the resolution then.
Right.
You can set the public hearing, it'd be that standing on its own, and then you don't have to vote on it. We just did it this way because we did.
It's just, you guys are already here, so that's why we gen, and nobody ever shows up, so, like I say, good job.
Going on record, this ain't just this one development that we're worried about. We've got other things in the pot in Corlins. Everybody needs to be aware of what's going on, and they need to be concerned that they need to come down and be part of this. All over the ca, all over the town.
It was advertised in the paper.
I know.
It was advertised on social media.
I know it was, but, uh, one thing that I, that I don't like at all is the fact that we don't put our minutes in the newspaper.
Well, you can make that motion, and we can do that.
Alright, I'll, that's gonna be tonight too.
That's gonna cost a lot of money.
And I am a little bit of a Facebook person, so.
We're going to increase the publication budget a lot, because that's gonna, if you put like three pages of minutes in there, that's gonna be a couple hundred dollars.
You know, it's just money, and it's, it's, it's just money that people need to communicate.
It's just money that I have to worry about.
This is their money, and, and before we spend their money, we let, we need to let, uh, know what's going on.
We, I mean, we've never had nobody to stop by and say, I need to send the minutes. We would gladly be able to do that, and that quote, it's just money, yes, it is their money that we need to order to spend wisely. Uh, I believe us squabbling over a quarter of one percent last year on some pay raises. So, let's, let's take that, you know, let's don't make that statement lightly.
Used, but I'll, I'll, I'll back that up. I, I made an error, same error, but you know what I mean.
I know, my feelings, I just wanted us to know that.
You could certainly post them on your website for free.
And that's why I was gonna say, it can be a PDF as a thing.
And I do when it allows me to.
We can put it on the website and social media, I mean, would that be better than us paying for it?
We just need to get more people where they're able to access it, I think. So whatever y'all think would, would be the best idea, so we can communicate what goes on in that one of these meetings.
It's not our job to bring it to their house. I'll just say that.
Okay.
Where are we?
So did you, are you putting that in a formal motion, or were you just talking?
I'm gonna make that a motion that we have another public hearing for this development. We gotta do it within twenty one days. Well, no, before you do, at least twenty one days to give the notice.
And we have to post it, change the signs, twenty one days before that.
Okay, you give a little time to get the signs changed and the notice, uh, and all that. Give them a chance to look at everything, all the property owners, residents and everything, so they know exactly what's going on. Because like I said, this is a, a short, limited public hearing, and we had a lot turned out. So I think we need to give them a little bit more time to review it, put their minds at ease, because it's good for the city. It's good for the property owners back there. But we just need to let them research their own information and then get comfortable with it, I think.
But what is the next planning commission?
Second Wednesday of the month, which would be.
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth for the next one, yes.
And that, that people can come to it, or they can't?
I mean, if, if they don't, they can come to it, but if it's not on the agenda, there's nothing to discuss.
Well, and by the, by the statute, the planning commission, as far as this annexation, is that all they are required to do.
This will be a standalone.
Before then, they've already approved the plan of services and the. Could people ask them questions if they put that on the table? The planning commission?
Sure.
Yes, sir, but I don't know, they couldn't be in a position to give, until they know something they don't know it, they couldn't be in a position to give a preemptive. You know, we, we're gonna run into trouble if they say, we will never let this happen on that property here, we will never let that happen. They can't give that opinion one way or the other. They can let the asking public. They can hear what the public has to say, yes, sir. And, and they can answer their questions if they can, if it's, if it's something they have done. They, they can answer their questions on, on the zone. And, but it, you know, really you have to have an agenda item, and right now, the forty acres, or the forty eight couldn't be an agenda item, because. It's not theirs, it's not theirs, it's not ours. Right. They have, they have done everything that they can do, that they can do under law for this annexation. Uh, I think it's got to fall at this point to the council. Now, that doesn't mean you couldn't have your planning commission at a public hearing. If you had another public hearing, you could bring your planning commission here too. Uh, there would be no problem in doing that.
Now, I don't wanna sound like I'm all for this, but we've beat this bush, you know, and, and done, jumped through these hoops to get this done. And like I said, you know, the residents in, you know, that area up there, I understand it, I do totally. But with this annexation, we have control over what goes on there. That's my only stance of it. Because I know, I know the developers, and I'm not gonna put words in their mouth, but it would be very easy for them to say, we're not worried about it, we'll do this, you know, and that's the only part. Shane said what I wanted to say, he just always says it better, uh, in his description, and he does, yours too. But that was, that was why I'm looking at, I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood, but that's just the way it is. You know, I just wanna protect the citizens that live up there and the town itself, because like I say, they're gonna use our roads. If, if, if there is a subdivision up there that's regulated by the county. The Smith County Sheriff's Department does not have the ability to police that. Am I correct in that assumption?
You're correct.
We would have to do that anyway. If chief is on lunch, or on a call, or whatever, and there's a gunshot up there. He'll be the first man, or his team will be the first people up there, even though that's not our citizens. We will be the one responding to the fire calls, more than likely, because the county fire department does not have the resources to do that kind of work.
So if we annex it, and then they bring upon us to zone X, Y, Z, we can shoot those down?
That's what it, you have, just like these zoning laws.
Like it, there's not gonna, it's not gonna be zoned anything, or just expanding?
After you annex it, you, you then zone, so it, it'll be a nothing until, and they can't do anything if you zone it, something. And until then, they just say, I don't know what I'm gonna do with it. I can just, I just wanted to see the limits, that's all I want. I want my property to be the rest of it to see the limits.
Now, they've had some wants, but they've never said exactly, you know, they've said this is what we want, but we just wanted to see limits right now, so.
And that's a recommendation that will come from the planning commission. After, if you annex it, they will come to them, and then it comes to you to pass by. Just like, just like you did, yes, just like you did on these two tonight.
I will, I will.
It will be no different than the crosses with Bonnell Road. If we have to police them right now, we get a total, we go up there, and that's in the canyon. It's not in the city. Those four or five houses.
And for the people that live in that subdivision, those houses that are built in the county on the right side of the highway, same side of Bonnell's own, beautiful homes. But look at their two roads. Look directly across the street at Mr. C E Hackett's subdivision, where Matthew Bush and Ms. Jane Turner, all them live. Look how much better of a street they have, that's in the city limits. We hold them to a higher standard in the city. You've got a more finished product in the city with our regulations. I think that's an accurate way, kinda to give a good visual.
If they dedicate a road, it's got to come to cities, but. I would draw them.
Which one?
You ain't taking help?
Yeah, I am.
Good, I'll let you do the minutes then.
You don't owe me this, brother.
Alright, no, I'm not.
You gotta withdraw the second.
We didn't have one.
We didn't have one.
Alright, so.
That's all the type of.
Yeah, okay.
So there's apparently no motion on the floor, but you're still on your resolution.
I'm gonna make a motion. That we annex that forty eight point forty three acres. So that that is part, that is on, or that's in the city limits. And at least we have some site to protect. Every taxpayer of this city that would be affected.
As a motion of second, we'll go up for discussion. I will add to that. We will put up, uh, when it goes up for zoning. We will put that out there to the public, and then at that time, you're more than welcome to come to the planning commission meetings. and be a part of that, to listen and see what they have. And before, then it'll come back to this body, because most people don't know what the planning commission does. The planning commission has vetted this for hours and looked at it and approved it, sent it to the council, sent it back. You know, so a lot of people get lost in that, I still get lost in it and I've been here a while. So that'll give the opportunity for the citizens to come and be a part of that process also. So I will say that and I'll show it up, is there any further discussion?
How big of a notice will it be for the citizens who come from the zoning to the planning black? How, when will it get put on the document for the planning commission and then what public notice, whatever you approve? Because I, I just don't want it to be, we approve it today and then we put a public notice out and say tomorrow for the next meeting.
We will set that down as a council, that is not set by the mayor, that's not set by the planning commission. That will be set by us, we have to give twenty-one day notice, it can be longer if needed, but we set those meetings and we did, we set these. Correct? Am I wrong on that?
You're not wrong on that, now the annexation is kind of a notice animal on its own. You have to send special ones, you have to send a letter from the property owners and things like that. The, the other part, you know, knowing and understanding this is an issue, I can't imagine this council and the planning commission wouldn't, wouldn't want some, wouldn't want more notice than what's traditionally given and you can all.
And I just want them to be able to be represented at the planning commission when this gets brought up, so they're not missing a, an agenda item.
Right, and we will do that and, uh,
Probably five years from now.
And, and they might not come in, you know, they might come in tomorrow and say, we wanna fill that out, well, we'll put that out soon as we get it. But it may be six months, it could be a year with this project, I don't think it'll be long, but it could be, you know.
I got a question. When, if we're gonna annex the forty-eight point four-three acres, that's gonna back up against some of the people on the outside of that piece of property over on Vernon Lane. Do we have to give them notice that we're annexing of next to them?
They're not in the city. We're, they're not in the, they're not the city, they're not citizens, so no, we don't.
But it would be a good sense of problem, I think so, but you don't have to know about. Okay, that's all the questions I had.
Is there any further, just? Did we get a second, did Joe say, I thought he did? Is there any further discussion, questions? All right, we'll have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bates.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we will make everyone aware of what's going here forward. Y'all hold me to that, Michael. All righty, is there any other new business?
I've got something I just wanna ask. I ask every year about fresh Washington sidewalks. I don't know if it, I, when I was campaigning, I told people I'd like to do it, it's never been done, it looks bad. I'd like to see the council like to vote to prioritize that or however the mayor might like to be doing it, if I have to pay somebody to do it or if our team has time to do it.
As of right now, we've not had time to do it.
Yeah.
And, you know, is it something that we can handle, it'll take us a long time to do it. Uh, if the council would like me to get quotes before budget season, I can ask to get some quotes. If so directed, I don't think that needs to come in a, in a, uh, a motion, but I can do that if, if this budget's asking.
I'm a good, good for getting quotes, because I'm, I'm genuinely curious to see what that will come to.
I will try to solicit as many as I can. That's all because of Danny's wife, I don't know where that's coming from, every sidewalk.
Down, just down Main Street, just down both sides of Main Street, what else? I don't know if they have any more sidewalks.
She's bound, I'll give out that again.
From here to the, from here to.
I will get that and try to have that, and I mean, it's something we'll have to budget for, so we can put that in the budget for this next year.
Yeah, that makes the sidewalk, that belongs to hang on in front of his house here. You know where I used to go?
Okay, Matthew, you want to put that PDF minutes on our website so they can look at it?
I will try my best.
Thank you.
I do it when it lets me. And there's been two or three on there, but lots of times it'll bounce back on me, but when it lets me, I try to put them on there, but yeah.
Okay.
Is there any other new business?
On that same matter, yes. Is that an issue with the website that we need to correct or to enable that it, even if that means something has to swap over? That website needs to be able,
Yeah.
capable of doing what we need it to do, if that means that we need to change some type of host or invest in some type of link, then that needs to happen so that it's.
While we're in budget season?
Well, feasible, if ours is not capable of it, it needs to be done, if it is not user enough friendly. I would rather spend money on our website host to make it user-friendly enough than all you've got to do is click on the upload button and a PDF go. I, I mean.
The editing package that we have.
Yeah, if it's just money, we'll let Danny.
Sorry.
You're never gonna live that.
I mean, make it to where it is
Yeah.
user-friendly and also host-friendly to where we can make sure that it's, it's meeting the need of our towns.
The editing package that comes with it, I'm, I'm assuming is the bare bones when it was first purchased.
While we're in this budget, just look into that to see if we.
Is that something, and like I say, I'm, I'm silly on computers, is that something that we need to have somebody come in and design a new website?
That means that it helps.
Get that out there.
Communicate.
Communicate and by all means.
So we wanna get maybe a couple of votes and see what that looks like?
Sorry?
Like I say, I'm, I'm not very smart on this stuff.
Sorry, don't look at that.
That's one of the main things.
If it helps you do, I mean, I know that's frustrating, trying to work within
Yeah.
a host site that you're saying upload and it's.
It's not host-friendly either.
Or data file, if you need to upload that data file because that's what our system is with, then make it where that's easy enough for you or whomever. Just, I don't know who does it, do you know, okay, that it's.
Okay. Fair enough. I know Amy and Robert Wagner read about that, so I mean, if they'd be a quick, see what's going on there, kinda see what it costs and give them my room, a few others, and see what goes on, we'll get that on the list. Any other new business? Hearing none, we'll move down to old business. A few things before I get to what's listed there, uh, Chamber Banquet is May fifteenth, five-thirty. There'll be an RSVP sent out to City Hall only, I'll get back to you guys as soon as I get that RSVP. Uh, do what?
What day?
I think a Thursday, May the fifteenth, that is a Thursday. So you don't have to give me an answer tonight.
At the Ag Center.
At the Ag Center, five-thirty meeting greet, six o'clock, program starts. Uh, pre-construction meeting for the sewer went good this last week, they hope to start in July. We do need to set a budget workshop, because we will be presenting the budget next meeting, am I correct? This is April, May, May and June, we'll read on that one time, and the second time of the public hearing in June. So we'll be thinking about those dates and then we'll move to the ordinance purchasing policy. And the reason I brought this up, I brought it up last month to give you guys some time to ponder on it. We are not officially, uh, trying to present this resolution tonight. I just wanted to get your feedback on the questions that you had, if there was any. Uh, I've done a little background on it, the state passed this in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three to up the limits, of course, not many times does the state pass anything that helps local government, it usually hinders it. Uh, you know, they're increasing the threshold from ten thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars if this body sees fit. Uh, we still try to solicit bid or solicit quotes with anything under twenty-five thousand and anything over twenty-five thousand, we would be required to try to obtain three bids on it. Not, not quotes, but bids. Uh, many of our sewer chemicals are up around that ten thousand dollar range now. We have longstanding relationships with a lot of the chemical providers, uh, the pump providers, the component. I can carry you down here to a pump station and probably show you twenty different parts that's ten thousand dollars or over. Uh, our computer servers, that's another example, Chief got one, we had one up front, I think they were what, eight-ish thousand dollars, maybe a year or so ago? So that's just to give y'all some examples and like I say, we're not presenting this, but I do plan on presenting this next council meeting. So I just wanted to, to reach out to y'all. All this would be approved money, kinda like earlier tonight with the sewer. Uh, it's no new money, doesn't open a checkbook to, you know, buy the mayor a new Cadillac. Uh, it just, you know, allows us to do our job a little more efficiently. It would save on things such as engineering, far as some small projects, advertising of course, which is not a huge expense, but, you know, it would save a little money on that, so that's all I've got on that. If there's any questions that I could answer, I'd be glad to. If not, we will, is there any other business?
Do you need to set that workshop, do you, you've got to have that set before our next council meeting?
That's totally up to this body.
Is that all that you just said?
Thirty is here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I said it better this time.
Just our next time, I'll take your name.
Uh, your May twelfth is your next council meeting?
Now, it can be at any time, we just have to advertise it.
Is your next planning commission, but we need to have a, you've got May twelfth is your council meeting? We've got to have a budget presented, correct, at that meeting?
And first three. We have public hearings that night too, over these zoning amendments that we might deny. So it's.
Of the same kind of councils, right?
Yes, yes, so budget workshop. That's fine. If y'all wanna set it down or if y'all will reach out to us and give us a date, we just have to have, what, a week roughly to advertise it?
What do you say?
It's easier if you do it now.
Yeah.
It's real, it's a lot easier if you do it now.
Notice I said if y'all will respond?
All I gotta say is tomorrow is April fifteenth. So after that, wherever you pick, I'm with. The unfortunate thing is, the IRS has extended the state's filing deadline to November the third, which crushes my being.
You can do it any day at any time.
I'm not good on fifth and second.
You're not good on the fifth or the second, right? Maybe, maybe they're also okay.
Does it have to be on Sunday?
Any day, anytime.
Any day.
My six.
Tuesday.
I thought he said Tuesday.
I'm good with Tuesday.
Okay, my six, okay.
Joe, you agree with that?
I gotta check the outpost, that is Mother's Day.
Uh, Mother's Day is on May the eleventh this year, that is the week off, so.
I'll be easy, but I'll try to do my best.
May sixth, what time?
Try to do it, do the last for some.
May sixth is six. That way we can present something to y'all, Michael can put it together and we can present it to y'all, which even after first reading, before the second reading, we can make changes to that. So if we say, oh, man, we forgot something, we can plug that in second reading. All right, is there any other business, there is no audit committee tonight. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, can hang around a while. Thank you, I'll be in adjournments.